Good afternoon, welcome to the February 24th, 2022 Planning Commission Infrastructure and Mobility Committee Meeting. This committee provides an opportunity to have an in-depth conversation with items contained on the agenda. Items can be referred to the committee to explore issues and identify impacts of a rezoning request. The committee discussion is less formal compared to the Planning Commission meeting, and there are generally no time limits for the speakers. If any participants have issues with the technology, please send a message to the moderator. I would ask the commissioners to hold all questions until the conclusion of all presentations and any public comments. Finally, please be recognized the chair, please be recognized by the chair before speaking. We have two discussion items on the agenda today. I'm going to flip the order of the items on the agenda. First, we have rezoning Z 5721, 1254 New Bern Avenue, and 19 and 23 Bart Street. This is a request to rezone approximately five tenths of an acre from residential mixed-use three stories and residential 10 to residential mixed-use four stories urban limited conditional use. Last time we met, we received a full staff presentation as well as a presentation from the applicant, and we also heard from members of the public. It's my understanding that no new conditions have been submitted by the applicant, so I'll ask staff for a brief update, please.
Thank you, this is John Anagast from Planning and Development. So that is correct, I have not received draft revised conditions from the applicant, so I'll just do a really quick recap of the case. As you mentioned, the request is for residential mixed-use four stories urban limited. And there, the site is at the corner of New Bern Pool and Battery. And there are two draft conditions offered, so these are not signed at this time, but could be signed as late as tomorrow and be eligible for action by the full planning commission at their March the 8th meeting. These have been, so the draft version of these has been offered by the applicant, which is that there would be a required one parking space per residential unit within the site, and that that parking could be required, or could be provided by remote parking, which may be as much as 660 feet away. And that would, that requirement would expire after a period of five years. The other condition is a maximum non-residential square footage of 4,000 square feet. So that's the case as it stands currently, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, John. So, let's see, as I said, we heard, we had a presentation from the applicant before. We heard from several members of the public. We've also received a few emails from members of the public. So I'd like to just bring it back to the table and see if we have any questions or comments from the committee members or either staff or the applicant. Commissioner Fox?
I think it's a question for staff. I recall at our last meeting, we had a significant amount of conversation about stormwater concerns and an inlet that was perhaps up on the Bart side, Bart Street side. I don't know if staff has been able to look at that and had any additional information that might be helpful.
Ben Brown is here from the Stormwater Division. I believe that his staff did do some inspections, or were checking on the stormwater infrastructure.
Yes, hey, this is Ben Brown from the Stormwater Division. Yes, I had our maintenance crews go out there and check the stormwater system out on Battery Drive, and the stormwater systems on Battery Drive are clear and functioning, and went a little bit farther down Battery and can't find any like reports of clogging or anything like that. As far as the Bart Streets system, the portion on public right-of-way appears, the inlet appears to be open and functioning, but the outlet pipe is on private property, which is on one of them, which is actually on one of the rezoned, or one of the properties asking to be rezoned, excuse me. And that outlet appears to be silted in there, and as part of the development of this lot, that pipe and drainage through that lot will need to be addressed. And I have met with the applicant as well to go over this and talk about the implications of that as well.
And just to be clear, so that is something that would need to be addressed during site plan?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ben. I'm getting a message that the applicant would like to respond to this as well, so moderator, if you could unmute the applicant.
Good afternoon, this is Isabel Maddox here today representing Moss Construction Design. The applicant also with me, James Moss is on the line, I believe, and Fred Belladen of Clearscapes, our architect is on the line. Just a quick thing, we did meet with Stormwater, I had a very good meeting, appreciate the city staff members for accommodating us. I know it's hard to get a meeting, so I appreciate that. And I think the biggest takeaway is that any development of this property, including the Bart Street parcels, would have to basically fix that pipe, either by redirecting the stormwater or fixing the pipe and having it, you know, come. And probably the likely route of that would be to come along the southern line of this property and then go maybe up along the right-of-way to New Bern. And so that's something that anybody developing, including us, will have to do, and I think that will help the current situation quite a bit, and I think we had a good conversation with Stormwater about that. Also wanted to address, I don't know if it's the appropriate time, a couple of other issues. As John said, we haven't filed any revised conditions, and honestly, it didn't seem that we needed to file a condition on Stormwater because Ben and his staff were clear that whoever develops here is going to have to, is going to be required to fix that. So we didn't file a condition responsive to Stormwater. And I do have just a quick comment on transportation and a couple of other things if I can have the opportunity, Madam Chair.
Okay, committee members, if we allow the applicant to address these issues, and we probably should allow members of the public who wanted to speak to also be able to speak, is that okay with everyone? Okay, okay, Ms. Maddox, go ahead.
Okay, so we also had a good meeting with transportation staff, and again, I appreciate the opportunity to have that meeting, it was very helpful. And the biggest takeaway, I have a presentation, if you could pull that up, John or Keegan or whoever's controlling the presentations. The biggest takeaway from that is that the plans for the New Bern BRT will probably leave, and they say it's about 90% designed, a significant amount of area that won't be used for a road, but it will be city right-of-way. And if we go to the, our new site plan, it kind of shows that that green area, kind of, go back, go back one. Yeah, the green area sort of at the top of our property, that's really going to be city area, and the transportation was very receptive to the idea of having some sort of a, either a public-private arrangement there or just having some arrangement with the city to use that area for possibly a little plaza, outdoor dining, should we do a restaurant there? So that, to me, that was a really encouraging, encouraging thing that the city transportation staff said. They also felt like there would be some additional parking along Battery available, and I'm sure Jason Myers might want to comment on that a little bit more, I saw his name on the list. So that was a good, we had two good meetings with staff, but they didn't result in any conditions. We can't really add a condition about that plaza area because it's city, city property. The other things we've talked about is a pedestrian connection between Bart Street and Battery, and we do want to, we do want to include that if possible, but one of the things we learned from Stormwater is that we're going to be required to dedicate a 20-foot wide easement along our southern line for a stormwater pipe, most likely. And that's really going to squeeze us from a space standpoint. If we can, if we can co-locate that stormwater easement and the pedestrian access point, then we're definitely want to do it, but it's hard to do a condition on that right now because we're really constrained on space. And nobody seemed to be clear on whether that pedestrian path could be basically on top of the stormwater easement, you know, once the stormwater pipe is put into place. So there are two or three things we want to do, we plan to do, but we can't really make a condition because there's, it's really something that'll happen, you know, at site plan time. So we have had some good exchanges with staff on these various issues.
Okay, thank you for that, Ms. Maddox. So moderator, did we have members of the public that were signed up that wanted to speak?
So I know Carmen Cawthon had signed up to speak prior to the meeting, but we also have seven other members who are listed, so I can go through, we can have Carmen speak first, and then I can go through and see if other attendees want to add comments, if that's all right.
Okay, that, that sounds fine. I know this is a committee, so we typically don't have time limits on speakers, but we are pressed for time, and I want to be able to hear from everyone, so if I could please ask the speakers to just be as brief as you can and try not to repeat what, what you said at the last meeting, because we did hear you. And also those who have sent emails, we had some very detailed emails, and we did read them. So let's start with the first speaker, and I'll just ask you to please try not to repeat each other so we can get through all the speakers and discuss the case. Thank you.
So we'll start with Carmen Cawthon.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I do have a presentation, if you don't mind putting that up, and you can skip to, I guess, slide number six.
Sorry, one moment.
So I'll, go ahead and start. When, when we met in January, it was revealed that the house next door to the development 100 Bart Street was part, was one of the Confederate old soldiers' homes cottages that had been moved. And I don't think anybody, anybody, anywhere knew that, and so that's a significant piece of history. And as I was doing more research, because everything I found was not, was pointing to the fact that all of those cottages had been destroyed, or all, everything on the property had been destroyed, I spent a significant amount of time trying to find information about the cottages. And finally, yesterday did find a document on, from the News and Observer that showed that these cottages were, had been sold before the property, what was left on the property was destroyed. And so that's a significant piece of history, and there are four more houses that are still existing on this, in this area that are part of that. The other piece of history that I found was that Raleigh had a fortification wall built, ordered by Governor Vance, and built in 1860, I believe, 1863 to 1865. And we know that the history of this area is called Battery Heights and Battery Drive because of the battery and the fortification that was built. Studies have shown that that fortification area is actually probably on the property that is asking to be redeveloped. Al Breedenberg, I think, sent you an email about that, and I said, if you will skip over to, two slides over. This is the map of the wall, the dark black line is the map of the wall. This is actually the Union map, there's also Confederate map where this was, the map, I mean, the wall was engineered, and so there had to be campsites because slaves were required to build the wall. There were also some free people, but they didn't have cars, so they couldn't go home at the end of the day. The slaves were hired out from the plantations. And I think, and I believe Mr. Breedenberg agrees, that if there is some way that this can go to the Raleigh Historic Districts Commission, and see, he's hired two different consultants to study this area, and they do believe, and I think if you go to the next page, I have the map that he put up, that he's done. So the black line is Mr. Breedenberg's line, and the other two lines are from the two studies. So the belief is that the houses that are on New Bern, there at the corner, are on the fortification, the promenade. And so while this is not, you know, may not be important to a lot of people, this is part of the truth of the history. There may be some archaeological artifacts there because the soldiers and the slaves lived in a camp that had to be close to the fortification to build it. This gentleman on, in the picture here was one of the slaves who helped to build the breastworks in that area and then moved to Oberlin after the war. And so I don't know how this could be done, I know, you know, I'm sure there are grants to help pay for it. The applicant has owned the property for a couple of years now. I would hope that this is something that can be done quickly, if we could find grants to pay for studies. And so I just wanted to bring this to your attention too, because I think this whole area is extremely important in terms of the history of Black Raleigh, White Raleigh, All Raleigh. And I would, I would like to ask, we have not talked to the applicant, because literally I was up last night trying to pull this information together, it's been difficult to find. And so those are my comments for today, and I appreciate your hearing me. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cawthon. Can we, before we move to the next speaker, can I ask staff to, I'm not sure. So Ms. Cawthon is pointing out that there might be historic artifacts on the rezoning site. Is that something that has been looked at? What is the process for looking at it? What does that mean in terms of us moving forward, we're not with this rezoning?
This is John Anagast. So the typical way that we think about historic character of a rezoning site is through buildings, for the most part. So we do have a review that's done by the historic preservation staff, then the main thing they're looking at is, is there a National Register Historic District or Landmark, or is there a local overlay district or landmark on the property? Or a resource that has been studied by the State Historic Preservation Office or identified by the Raleigh Historic Development Commission or City Preservation Staff as desirable for a survey or study? And so that search did not produce anything for the rezoning site. The staff report does note that there is a National Register District to the south, Battery Heights. And, you know, so that is the primary research that we do as staff in a rezoning case. And so this information about a, you know, earthworks related to the Civil War is not something that we would look for because it kind of falls outside the purview of development regulation, most, you know, typical development regulation. So there have been past rezoning cases where one of, you know, a historic site has been identified. In the particular case I'm thinking of, this actually was a case to remove a portion of the Prince Hall Historic Overlay District along Wellington Street, and in that situation, the applicant wanted to relocate two houses that were on the rezoning site to an area that was further, further to the interior of the Prince Hall Historic District. And so as part of that relocation, they offered a zoning condition to perform an archaeological survey of the area where those houses were as basically a mitigation for changing the location of the houses. And so that is the kind of thing that could be a response to this type of information, an archaeological survey. I, you know, from the, what we've been able to find in the National Register research for Battery Heights and other areas nearby, didn't, didn't appear that this particular block has been identified as an area of, in terms of the structures, the houses that are there, as an area that is historically significant.
Okay, is the archaeological survey something the applicant is willing to consider?
Yes, we've talked about that on our team and would be happy to allow that. The issues we have to address are liability, and, you know, there's some existing structures on the site, two of which are condemned, and it would be dangerous for somebody to be, for the people to be on site without those being protected by fencing. The other thing is there's one house on the site that is occupied, and we need to have the occupancy probably either ended, or we limit the, limit the dig to the area not, that's not occupied. So I think if we could adequately address the liability and occupancy issues, you know, I think we encourage that. It sounds like, it sounded like some really interesting history there. And so I think that, yes, we would be willing to do that, you know, and probably put it in the hands of Raleigh Historic District Commission. Fred Belladen, our architect, was formerly on that commission, and he may have a comment to make about it. We talked about it as a team, but we do need to, we need to make sure that we cover those issues, and it may not be easy to cover because the lease that, there's a lease that's going to, that has some time on it, that somebody's going to be living on the one house that's occupied for some time. And it may be that we either have to cordon off existing buildings in a way that, and then it doesn't leave a whole lot of area left. But we would certainly want to explore that with Raleigh Historic Districts and the neighbors. I'm not sure we could, I'm not sure we could condition it because there's too many variables right now, but, but we certainly would welcome that opportunity. And Fred, do you have anything to add to that?
Sure, good afternoon, Fred Belladen with Clearscapes. I work a lot with the Raleigh Historic Development Commission, I've chaired it previously, and I'm currently on the Review Advisory Board. So I'm happy to talk to RHDC staff to see if they have any interest in taking the lead on a survey. I know that they have been interested in archaeological surveys in the past, finding funding for them is usually the question mark.
Okay, Commissioner Fox, did I see your hand?
You did, but you actually asked a question. I was going to also ask a question related to some kind of archaeological condition, much like we've seen on some other historic properties.
So Mr. Belladen, is there some sort of condition that could be crafted? I understand what Ms. Maddox was saying about all the different variables and liability. Is there some sort of condition that could be crafted just to assure the neighbors that this will occur?
That's a good question. I think Isabel would be, I'm not a lawyer, nor do I play one in real life, so I think Isabel would, would need to speak to that.
You know, Chair Bennett, you know, we could craft something, but it would have some, I don't want to say squishy language, but allow, some language allows a flexibility. So it's such time as there are no tenants on the property, and provided that, you know, proper liability insurance is provided and that the structures are fenced off. I think if we did those three things, then I think we probably could come up with a condition, but it doesn't, it, you know, it ties, it ties the availability down kind of tight. I think there could still be some sort of a dig in part of the site.
Okay.
So I do think we could come up with something, you know, it's not, it's not going to be perfect, though, because we do have to cover the liability issues, and we have to be sensitive to the occupant of that, of one of the houses.
Right, I understand, okay. So can I ask Travis or staff? Our deadline for this is rapidly approaching, so if we wanted the applicant to attempt to craft some, some sort of condition, could they do that and bring it to the Planning Commission?
Yes, ma'am, and that's a great question, I was thinking through that as the applicant was speaking. So today really is the last day that you can hold this item in this committee. After today, it needs to progress to the Planning Commission for final recommendation on the 8th, on March 8th. Because the deadline, I believe, is the 14th of March. So unless there is a time extension requested, that's your path forward. So if that's how the committee would like to proceed, the applicant could submit new conditions, although she would have a pretty short fuse to do so, we'd have to have them in our hand by tomorrow for March 8th. So if she could start drafting a condition and submit it to us, and then have it reviewed on the 8th, I think it's possible.
Excuse me, would the applicant like to respond, Ms. Maddox, does that give you enough time?
Yeah, I think I can, I want to, my client, I hope James Moss is on the line, and I was trying to send him a text, but if he's on the line, I like to say, you know, James, if we draft something today or tomorrow, and can you come by and sign? Do you think we can get there? That's just a question for him, and I hate to do that in a public forum, but I, I don't, I don't see any other way at this point. James, are you on the line?
Yes, yes, yeah, I don't see why that can't be done, I can definitely get by your office tomorrow.
Okay, so I'll endeavor to draft something up and get him to sign it tomorrow. And so our deadline is to submit a signed condition tomorrow, is that correct, John Anagast?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. And that has to be an original signature?
It could also be dockey signed.
Okay, that might make it a little bit easier.
Okay, great, I get when the plan comes together. So were there any, were there other residents signed up to speak? We have a little over 10 more minutes because we have to stop a little bit early to go immediately to committee of the whole. So are there others who wish to speak?
I can go through the list, I don't have any advance notice that anybody wants to speak.
That's fine.
So I'll, I'll just go through the list of attendees, if you don't wish to speak, just let me know, or you can unmute yourself, and then we can move to the next person, so Alexandra Orr. You there, Alexandra? Move to the next speaker, Carolyn Winters.
Thank you, nothing new to add.
Thank you. Chicana Bow.
I would like to yield, I believe Mr. Klein is on, and I would like to yield to him.
Okay. Donald Klein?
Yes, I'm only if you can hear me.
Yep.
Okay, good, thank you. Well, I will keep this very short. I don't have anything really new, but I have more recently emphasized, other than what I presented in my first long presentation, the, the importance of maintaining precedence. You all, and by you all, I mean the whole city system, has long studied this matter of zoning, and I would hate to see all of that work overturned so quickly and for such a small matter, and for really no particular advantage except to Mr. Moss. The parking on the street is a major thing, I've heard that addressed today, but I have addressed that in my written material, that the off-site parking is really, as proposed, is so inconvenient, is practically not, not existent. So that's that. The general compatibility with R10 is a major, major factor. We are in support of the bus rapid transit. This doesn't seem to affect bus rapid transit, or the BRT doesn't affect this. My main concern and the request then finally would be, as noted at the very end of my recent submittal last night or night before, please deny this, and let's just wait for a better development to come along New Bern Avenue. The, the basics are there, and it's, Mr. Moss will be a major player, but the chance to But the, the chance to really come up with some good retail along New Bern Avenue, and, and more space, more area, more everything along New Bern Avenue, but don't turn it down into a residential area. Uh, the people on Bart Street would like for those two lots to be retained and to be completely compatible with all of the existing buildings there and the residents. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Klein.
Uh, Ernest Dollar?
Uh, hello, I'm Ernest Dollar with the City of Raleigh Museum. And, uh, I just was asked to come on and talk about, uh, really quickly, the legitimacy of the, the history behind this project. And, uh, I've worked with, uh, Mr. Breedenberg for a couple of years now on this project. And it is an incredibly interesting historical piece that we can gain a lot from our city's past by, by looking into this survey. Uh, we are doing a similar study out at Dix Park, trying to utilize some, um, ground sensing radar and some other um, technologies to try to fire out where these, these historical earthworks could have been. So, um, yeah, it's, it's a great project, and I think we stand to, to learn a lot about the city's history by doing some, some close look at this before it's developed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Karen Haynes?
Uh, just briefly, uh, wanted to remind you that I did send a letter last night with most of the information that, uh, has already been discussed, um, in particular, uh, the information regarding the old soldier's home and my mom's house, uh, being one of those. Again, she's ninety-nine, and we had a conference call, um, with Carmen this week, where she literally explained to both Carmen and I, and some other siblings, how that home was purchased, and Mr. Provost, she, she spelled the name, um, was the person that she and my dad, uh, purchased it from in forty-nine, nineteen forty-nine. So just again, trying to continue to remember that, uh, this is a serious historic uh, area that, um, only four homes remain on that block right now. Thank you.
Thank you, thanks.
Uh, Nicole Burpo?
Sorry, I was trying to unmute myself, thank you, this is Nicole Burpo, I'm a Battery Heights community member. Um, in addition to reiterating what my community members have already said, I'd like to point out that we are in favor of development along New Bern, New Bern and in this property in general. But we're hoping that, um, a more thoughtful development could be, could be proposed, that perhaps doesn't have as many, um, as many units or as much impact on the neighborhood as this one will. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments.
And Retasha Moore?
I'm sorry, I have nothing to say, thank you.
That was, uh, that was the last speaker.
Okay. Um, do we have, um, any other questions or comments from committee members?
I have one question, I, I might have missed this from the last meeting, but, um, the amenity area on, shown on the site plan, um, I know it backs up to like a dark space in the alley, so I was wondering about the site lighting to kind of discourage crime, um, that may happen in that amenity area. I don't know if that's already been touched on, but I just wanted to hear from the applicant about, um, the use of that amenity area and the use of lighting that's, that may be inviting or, um, or will, you know, um, have a negative impact against, um, negative, or against crime, is what I'm trying to say.
Thank you, Commissioner Mann, um, can we unmute the applicant?
Yes, um, that's a great question, Mr. Mann, um, and one that we have definitely given thought to. And I'm gonna swing this over to Fred Bellin, who has, uh, been designing the site. And so Fred, why don't you talk about, you know, what sort of, um, provisions we have to that?
Sure, it's a, um, it's a good question. One of the things, and I don't know if you noticed it in the last presentation, if you look at the site section, you'll notice that the courtyard level is several feet below the neighboring residences. And we do that for a couple of reasons. One, normally in the UDO, you're required to do a six or eight foot tall transition yard wall, which can be pretty severe when it's that close to houses. So by lowering the courtyard level, we're able to lower that wall down on the neighboring residence side to a much more manageable height of several feet, so it looks a lot better. And then what that does is, when we provide lighting, especially to deter crime and things like that, it tends to usually be pole mounted and high, which is not friendly for the neighborhood. So by lowering the courtyard down and having the shorter wall on the neighbor side, we can actually wall mount the lighting, so it's confined to the courtyard and doesn't negatively impact the neighboring residents. Does that answer your question?
Yes, sir, thank you.
Do we have any other questions or comments? I have one quick one, and I think I had asked this near the end of the last meeting, and it was about the, I guess it's proposed at this point, TOD district, uh, along New Bern. Is it anticipated to extend back this deeply, I guess is the word, into the neighborhood? Or is it gonna be more narrowly focused along New Bern Avenue? I'm trying to get a sense of if this area where we're looking at this rezoning would be part of the area recommended for higher densities like this? Or if that would be outside of it?
So we have not made those proposals public yet, they're still being developed, but I could tell you, I am working on the, uh, New Bern Station Area Planning Process that is in, in progress right now. And so the preliminary proposals that we have is that the TOD overlay would be mapped on the New Bern parcel within this site, the parcel that is, has frontage along New Bern Avenue, and the two parcels along Bark Street, or addressed from Bark Street, would not be included in the TOD Overlay District.
Okay, thank you, John. Um, I'll just add that, that's one of my concerns, and I think I've expressed this on some other rezonings, is when there are studies going on, where we're looking at a rezoning and the study is still in process, I get a little uncomfortable, um, approving things that I'm not sure are going to be consistent with the outcome of the study. And so that is something that's in the back of my mind as we're going forward with this, but, um, if we, if there aren't any other questions or comments from, um, committee members, uh, does anyone wanna make a motion? Commissioner Fox?
Um.
Oops, I'm sorry, Commissioner Mann, did you have something?
No, I thought we were waiting on some information tomorrow, before we, I'm just, I was, I might, I might have misheard heard that wrong, but I thought we were waiting on tomorrow, and then something's gonna happen tomorrow as far as signatures, and then as far as new conditions, and then, um, we were going to defer this to March the eighth, I thought.
I think we have, well, Travis or, or John, let me know if I'm misunderstanding. I think we still have to vote this out to Planning Commission, and then Planning Commission can ask for the time extension, is, is that right?
That's correct.
Okay. So, so we would do the motion here to make a recommendation to Planning Commission? Okay, okay. Commissioner Fox?
So I, based on that timeline and the fact that we are waiting for some additional condition language related to, um, the significance as an archaeological site, um, I'd like to recommend that we vote this out to the full Planning Commission with no recommendation to, um, allow the applicant additional time.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion from Commissioner Fox to vote it out with no recommendation to allow the applicant additional time to get the condition in order. Um, Commissioner Mann has seconded the motion. All in, oh, wait, do I, do we need to do a roll call, mister? Okay, no, all in favor, raise your hand. That's unanimous, three, nothing, three zero, I guess I should say, to vote it out with no recommendation. So, um, that takes care of that item. And, uh, Travis, the second item, TC four twenty-one, will, we can move to our next meeting?
So you have a couple of options, if you want to hold it in the committee, you can, that would delay discussion by another month. Uh, you could instead move this item to the Planning Commission on March eighth, and then have the discussion there if you wish.
Okay, does staff have a preference, is there an issue with timing if we hold it in this committee? Or would you prefer to, uh, move it to the Planning Commission?
I'm not sure if we've got a timing issue from a code standpoint, but I believe staff is, is ready to move the discussion forward.
Okay, well, I'm sorry.
According to the staff write-up, the Planning Commission's deadline is March twenty-eight. And so if we put this in the March committee meeting, normally a recommendation would be in the first Planning Commission meeting in April, so that would be after the deadline, so I think you need to move it out and let Planning Commission uh, handle it or request an extension either on the eighth or the following meeting.
Okay, do I need a motion and a vote to move it out, or do we just say we're moving it to the Planning Commission?
I mean, it's, it's informal, so you could say without objection, we'll move this back out to the Planning Commission, then
Okay.
Commissioners, Fox or Mann want to object, then they'll pound the table and, yeah.
Okay, well, without objection, we will move item TC four twenty-one, Transit Street Cross-sections and Green Plus Frontage to the March eighth Planning Commission meeting. Seeing no objection, I think we're done. Uh, I think one of the things, staff, we might want to look at going forward is the timing of this meeting. Uh, because if we have, if we're gonna look at actual rezoning cases, or if we're gonna have multiple agenda items, we keep bumping up against Committee of the Hole. And I hate to feel like I'm rushing people or, or rushing through items. So I don't know if there's an option to maybe move it back a half an hour, or look at a different day, but just something to think about, so we don't feel like we're rushing through items.
We can certainly work with the committee members to recalender, if that's the desire.
Okay. Um, well, is there anything else? Okay, if not, then we will adjourn this meeting, and I will see you, or some of you, at Committee of the Hole in four minutes.